Okay. So thanks for the opportunity to talk here. I'll talk about identification of immunogenic neoadoptopes. I'll start with giving a general overview of work we've done on predicting CDAT cell epitopes in other fields, specifically allergy and infectious diseases. And that was work that's done in the context of the immune epitope database that we maintain. And then I'll go into the cancer specific work that is more recent and that we've just started kind of like the last half year or so. We've evaluated the different methods that we've developed for these other disease types and how we've evaluated them, assembling a dataset and benchmarking essentially what works and what doesn't. So in terms of background, I always like to do a little bit of biological introduction. When we're talking about CDAT cell epitope recognition, we're referring to cells that are antigen presenting cells, meaning they have some kind of antigens, and that could be anything, any kind of protein typically that is being expressed, which is every protein in the cell, subject to degradation, where you have peptide fragments, and these peptide fragments can get bound and presented on the cell surface by MHC class one molecule. So you end up with peptide fragments of the protein content inside the cell that is displayed on the outside. And that mechanism allows T cells to scan essentially for presence of peptides that shouldn't be on the cell, meaning in the cell, and allows us to identify cells that have antigens that shouldn't be, such as viral antigens in the case of an infection, or mutated proteins, or proteins that shouldn't be expressed in a fully differentiated cells, like embryonic proteins or so, that are tumor associated. So this allows the T cell to recognize a cell that has a problem and then do something about it, namely kill the cell. That would be what cytotoxic CDAT cells do. It can also release cytokines and attract other cells, that could be innate cells or so, to the site of trouble, and such as macrophages or so, and further diminish the source of the offending antigen. And also importantly, T cells, when they do this and go through a productive cytotoxic response, will proliferate and form a memory pool that'll then be able to circulate throughout the body and kill other cells that present the same peptides, and perform a memory population that is, if this reoccurs, would be able to have a quick second response. So when we're talking about T cell epitope mapping, we're essentially asking, in a set of antigens, where we say have a mutation, what is going to be the peptides that can be recognized in this way? That would make this peptide, say, an epitope if it can trigger a T cell response. In order to understand what peptides can do this, you really have to understand what's going on inside the cell that leads to this epitope recognition process. So as I said, every protein inside the cell is subject to degradation. Proteins don't live forever. There's lifetimes of hours, days, maximum weeks, where they get degraded and cut into individual peptides that are mostly used to reuse to synthesize new proteins. But part of these peptides can be transported by a transporter associated with antigen presentation tab into the ER, but they get mostly degraded again, but some can bind to MHC class one molecules that are then transported to the cell surface. And again, to be an epitope, you need to have a T cell with a T cell receptor that can recognize this peptide. So again, the question is, given a protein with, say, a mutation somewhere, is this or is this not peptide going to be presented on the cell surface? And all of these processes are not random, but there's a certain specificity to them. So the proteins will only cut certain peptides, tap will only transport some, et cetera. And we've done a whole series of studies to investigate the selectivity of these different processes. And in the end, you can have an estimate of that about 1 in 7 peptides that you can imagine get transported into the ER. 1 in 40 or so can bind with a reasonable affinity to a specific MHC one molecule. And 1 in 2, if presented with an MHC molecule on the cell surface, there will be a TCR for it. So when you look at these, MHC class one binding stands out. That's the bottleneck. So for a given individual, what really drives mainly what peptides you end up on the cell surface is the binding step, that is kind of the most specific part of this pathway. And that's why our lab has spent a lot of work characterizing the different MHC molecules and determining the binding specificity of different peptides to them. So you end up with experiments like this, where you have a peptide that you're titrating in with a known reference ligand that binds with high affinity to your molecule of interest, and you determine the concentration at which you outcompete 50% of your reference ligand, and the concentration is then the IC50 inhibition concentration, 50%, and that, if the assay is done under the right conditions, is an approximation of your KD value, where the log is essentially binding free energy. And you can say, okay, then the problem is easy. You just go through and synthesize all the peptides that you're interested in and measure the binding affinity, but that is simply not feasible because of types of money and resources that could be done. So instead, as we are bioinformaticians here, we're obviously trying to predict what is the outcome of this experiment and to predict binding affinity. And we're doing that using machine learning approaches, where essentially you give your algorithm a set of peptides and measured affinities and ask, can I have a function in some kind of function space where if I give it all my sequences, I get back kind of the affinities, and then you hope that it extrapolates to new peptides the same way? And machine learning is a quite old technique, although right now everybody thinks everything is new, and now it's deep learning, which is a miniscule difference to things that have been done before. Anyway, so the names change, but ultimately you change your function space, you change how do you search, and you change what you consider a good approximation of your affinities. A very simple approach of doing this, in the case of peptide MHC binding that actually works quite well, is having a simple matrix where you say, okay, for every residue in positions 1 through 9, if you consider 9 mere peptides, you have a value for a given peptide, you just sum up for each residue the values, you add an offset, and then that is your approximation of a position independent model, where every position in the peptide independently contributes to an overall binding affinity. And given that the MHC class one case, you have a very linear stretched out peptide interaction to the binding groove, that is actually a pretty good approximation. So what you then do is you minimize in some way the differences between your measured and predicted values, and then that gets you your coefficient matrix. So that is one approach. And so in order to see how does this now compare to, say, neural networks or support vector machines or whatever, we want to evaluate the prediction performance. And I just spent a few, one slide here on talking about what we mean by that. So in the case here, we have two classical, really pioneering binding prediction methods, SIFPI, D and BIMAS, that give a score of every peptide. Here is one dot. You have a predicted score and you have your measured IC50 values. We know from the past that an IC50 value of less than 500 nanomolar, at least for infectious diseases, is a threshold that is considered captures about 85, 90% of all epitopes. So we want to identify those that have affinities of 500 nanomolar or better. And essentially that means you want to evaluate how good these scores separate here. A high score is a good binder. How do they separate the binders from the nonbinders? So you're getting like rates of true positives, false positives, true negatives, false negatives, as typical, and you can do that varying this threshold from high to low. You're getting an ROC curve. So a perfect prediction would give you a curve that goes straight up to 100%. You've got all your true positives, and then you get your negatives. And actually, BIMAS and SIFPI, although generated in data from the early 90s, already produced very, very good identification of these binders, because actually, MHC class one binding is a very easy problem, if you want, for machine learning. So in order now to do such evaluations in a consistent fashion, we need lots of data points like this. And where we're getting them from is the immune epitope database. So I'll briefly talk about that. That is, it's a free online resource funded by the NIH. We're dealing with allergens, infectious diseases, autoimmune diseases, transplants, and alloantigens. We are not doing cancer, and that is because of intricacies of funding, because we're funded by NIAID and not the NCI. So yeah. The data is curated manually from the literature or submitted by data generators. There's a number of large-scale epitope discovery contracts that are funded and they're mandated to deposit directly into the database, so all that data ends up there. So we have these two data sources, and that ultimately means we have to translate free text, figures, tables, et cetera, into one consistent data structure. The data experiments that we are considering is peptide MHC binding, which I alluded to before, but also MHC ligand dilution. So the difference here is that you're taking a cell and you're pulling off peptides that are processed and presented on the cell surface, and then you sequence them by mass spectrometry admin degradation or something like that. And that then gives you not only the binding specificity of the MHC molecule, but also some information about the processing steps that precede it. Then to really be an epitope again, we want to have a T cell response. So we're curating what T cells and what conditions under which immunization or so are actually recognizing a peptide presented by an APC. We do the same for antibodies, but in the context of this talk, I'm not going into any detail there. So at this point, we have over a million experiments curated in the IEDB defining the recognition status of over 240,000 epitopes from 17,000 papers, the majority being from infectious diseases. This reflects the literature, what's out there with infectious diseases studied a lot, then autoimmunity, some allergy. Yeah. So this is the homepage. If you go, then you can search, for example, for just give me all MHC ligand assays from humans, in this case from allergic diseases, and you'll get your dataset back. So the dataset that I wanted to talk about was the first one we extracted after populating the IEDB was a large-scale dataset of 50,000 measured binding affinities for different MHC alleles and different lengths. So for each one of these lines here is one dataset, and you're not supposed to read this, it's just supposed to impress you that we had a lot. So with that dataset, we could do the first comprehensive evaluation of how different methods that were out there at the time performed. And the key take home messages for us was, A, when we use this data to train new algorithms, even the stupidest algorithm would outperform all the other algorithms that were out there simply because having a lot, a lot of data totally beats your smartest algorithm trained on 100 data points. The other thing is that the prediction performance for MHC class one binding was very high, with greater than 0.9 for all the methods that we essentially tested. And the neural network suite of tools, NetMHC was the first one. There's a number of them, developed by Mort Neilsen and Ole Lundt in Copenhagen, outperformed the other methods that we had. And as a general recommendation, if you publish a benchmark where you don't, your own tool doesn't perform the best, that's actually believed and cited well. So that's a good approach. It's very unusual for bioinformaticians, but it works. Okay. So predicting T cell epitopes. Now, what I showed here, this is predicting binding, measuring binding, predicting binding. That works very well, but ultimately we want to predict T cell epitopes. And when you do that, then in reality, a number of things arise that make the initial comparisons, where you're considering one allele, one length. That's really not what you're doing in reality. In reality, you have, say, a patient, and they express six alleles at the same time. So now, how do you deal with, say, a patient where you have 10 candidate peptides and they bind with great affinity, but all to HLA A0201, and then you have another peptide that has middle affinity for BO702 or so? How do you mix them? And so when you see, what you see here is an evaluation for all the different alleles, we make the cumulative distribution of epitope affinities, and you see some alleles bind very, very high affinity peptides between 1 and 10, and essentially all the epitopes fall there, and others, there's not a single epitope that binds better than 30 nanomolar. On average, you'll see that about 80% or so are here at the 500 nanomolar threshold, which had been established in the past. But when you look at the extremes, you do have quite a lot of diversity. So what comes out of this is actually when you're pooling predictions for different alleles in one individual, you should not just look by IC50 and take the top ones, because what will happen is that you overrepresent some alleles that just tend to bind everything, that are promiscuous a lot, versus other alleles that require, say, a tryptophan at the C terminus definitely, and it has to have a proline in position 2. So you just have much fewer peptides that bind well, and that seems to drive that you'll then end up with epitopes that are tolerated even though they have lower affinity compared to another allele, but has lots of competition for all kinds of peptide that binds well. So the approach actually that works much better is to rank your peptides and compare ranks. And ideally, we would like to have allele-specific thresholds rather than just having the 500 nanomolar threshold. So then, I already said a little bit about that, the next thing is peptide length. Typically, originally, people only studied nine mares, because that was the first peptide that was alluded, so everybody thinks that's it. Well, then in reality, you end up with a few more, but there wasn't actually very little work on the different peptide lengths. So we did a systematic study, asking, when you compare straight from the binding profile different alleles, what do they prefer most? So this is all relative binding data to a nine mare. You see B50 or 101 actually prefers eight mares over nine mares and hates 10 mares or 11 mares. Then you have HLA A0101, which actually prefers 10 mares and hates eight mares. So it's quite a lot of divergence. And this is straightforward in vitro binding assays. In contrast, if you look to the profile of peptide lengths that you're getting out of a natural cell, they look much more similar. So you still see that B50101 prefers eight mares over the others, compared to the other alleles, and you see A0101 prefers 10 mares over the others. But on average, they look much the same. So what's happening here is that you have these other factors like tap transport, et cetera, that are dominating certain lengths. So a nine mare is going to be much better to transport by tap and potentially trim by ERAP, et cetera, than other lengths. So you have a length distribution that is not reflecting here, that is reflecting the combined process of antigen processing and presentation through all kinds of different biological molecules, and on top of that, the MHC length binding preference. So it doesn't matter that HLA A0101 really likes to bind 15 mares. If it doesn't get them, you'll not see them on the cell surface. Okay. So how do you deal with this computationally? So essentially computation, it means if you bind affinity, and if you have a prediction method that really predicts affinities really, really well, you need to correct still for the different lengths availabilities in the ER. So essentially, a very, very high affinity 30 mare should be punished compared to a medium affinity 9 mare, which is just going to be more abundant in the ER. So if you compare this weighted approach that is in purple, it outbeats the trivial approach of just saying, well, just take nine mares, that's in red, which performs really, really, really well, but obviously by definition, you're going to miss non-nine mare peptides in your dataset. If you, and the worst thing you can do is just treat everything equal, because then you're going to pick a bunch of 11, 12, 13 mares that are just not going to be there. So actually, this also says to some extent, if you really just can only afford to synthesize very, very few or test very, very few, sticking to nine mares is a perfectly reasonable approach. Okay, summarizing this first part. So T cell epitope recognition is a multifactorial process. There's the antigen processing and presentation step and binding, et cetera. Training and evaluating the epitope prediction really relies on high quality in large-scale datasets, and for cancer, we are really just getting into this. And we are providing data and tools, again, like mainly for infectious diseases, allergy and transplant, and autoimmunity, but these are general biological processes. So MHC binding is MHC binding, so that's why they're also used in cancer. So but yeah, so a bunch of people were using the IEDB tools for cancer, like the Pfizer people that invited us here. And in general, they were then asking, so what should we do? And many people were asking us this and asking, okay, should we do the same thing like you're saying for infectious diseases? Is the 500 nanomolar binding affinity that was established in 1994 paper on peptides from influenza, is that a useful threshold in cancer? And there were a number of reports suggesting in cancer, it's very different, because the peptides are very similar to self. And there was evidence that actually, cancer epitope bind with lower affinity, because that's necessary for them to avoid tolerance. Other sets is just the same. Well, then another thing is that people came to us and say, we have this peptide and it binds with high affinity, but why don't I have a T cell response? I'm hoping I've shown you, and this is generally true, that is not, peptide binding is a necessary requirement, but is no way close to being sufficient for being T cell recognized, right? There's always crucial to recognize this, so binding predictions, passing binding predictions is one criterion, but it will not ensure that you have T cell recognition. And then we have all these different processes like that. I mentioned that influence immunogenicity, like HLA binding, processing, et cetera, and it hasn't been clear in the neoadoptope setting how these should be combined. So what we did is we got some data from the cancer immunity database that was curated, then we added additional data. We only considered class one peptides here in the whole talk. We're doing work on class two, but I'm focusing on class one here throughout. We picked 45 peptide pairs where we had the epitope and the associated mutated peptide. We curated additional ones. Actually, we now have, I think, double this number, but I'm showing you the data on a total of 81 epitopes with 89 restrictions. So some are recognized in the context of two different MHC. That's why we have this discrepancy in the numbers here. So this is, all of these peptides were synthesized and tested for binding. So this is actually experimental data, where we're showing that when you see the cumulative distribution of the epitope binding affinities, so these are known experimental epitopes to their relative identified HLA restriction, you see that 83% bind with 500 nanomoles, which actually mimics very well what we had in the past for infectious diseases. So when we're, instead of using the binding assay, we use the binding prediction, we're getting a very similar curve, confirming again that the binding predictions actually work very well and reproducing the binding affinities. I have a scatter plot somewhere at the end that shows this more directly. And then the question was again, now we have a direct comparison and can answer this original question, is there a difference in the affinity thresholds for cancer versus non-cancer epitopes? So we did a comparison assembling 200, over 2,000 viral epitopes from the IEDB, again with known class one restriction. And then we're seeing here that if you compare your viral epitopes and your cancer epitopes, there's absolutely no evidence at all that the cancer epitopes bind worse. If anything, in this dataset, they bind better. So we have no evidence in our minds that there's any kind of selection for low affinity peptides in a neoadoptope setting. Yes, and that's kind of just summarizing that. Then going a bit further, we are asking, can we really pick these neoadoptopes in a realistic setting? And the realistic setting is, you have a set of sequences, a set of mutations, you focus on single nucleotide variants, and ask which peptide that is now a neopaprite based on this is actually recognized. So we made a background dataset using TCGA data, that is the gray points, that is background control dataset, so they essentially just ran the mutations and making peptides from them, and be asking, if we compare these to the known immunogenic peptides in blue, could we have picked them out? So the first thing, this is essentially kind of the same data as I showed you before. The vast majority of these blue ones bind with an affinity of better than 500 nanomolar, then you're at 80% or so. But if you are even more rigid and say 5,000 nanomolar threshold, really picks all but three. These three are kind of interesting. It always pops up that you have a bunch of peptides that kind of don't fit the general motifs, but we believe in several of these cases, there's cysteines in the peptides. Cysteines mess up the binding assay and therefore probably have confused the binding prediction algorithms, because well, you get your typical cystine problems when you make peptides. So 90% of your background peptides are going to be here. So just filtering out peptides that are less than 5,000 nanomolar already cuts your dataset by a factor of 10 and loses very few of your epitopes. So that's useful. And next, we wanted to focus now in here, though, can we be even better and pick out the blue from the gray? So and we did essentially the same things that I showed you before. When we're doing the straightforward, just MHC prediction by IC50, you get the blue line. If you're instead using ranks, which better allows you to compare peptides across different alleles, you go from the blue to the red, and you see you're getting a better prediction performance pretty much throughout. And if you do the length rescaling, rather than treating all peptides the same, but punishing essentially peptides of unusual length, you're getting the green curve here and really quite excellent, I would say, ability to recap the known literature epitope from this random background dataset. Now, as I mentioned, in the cancer setting, you're really something very different from infectious diseases, namely you have the concept of your wild type peptide and the mutated peptide. And this is plotting the mutated peptide affinity versus the wild type peptide affinity. And when you look here, you have three affinity patterns. The first affinity pattern has been discussed a lot. Those are mutations that give rise to a peptide that has very high affinity. So that has been intuitively thought, okay, those should be very immunogenic, because these would be absent completely, they couldn't bind, the wild type peptide couldn't bind at all to the MHC and will therefore not be present during T cell maturation, and T cells wouldn't be essentially taught that this is a normal peptide, because they would never see it. Then in this area here, you have peptides that have a quite similar affinity for both the mutated and the wild type peptide, and there's plenty of epitopes here. And then you have this affinity pattern three, where you have a better affinity for your wild type peptide than the mutant, and you have none here. So that is something that has been discussed a lot, and we tend to agree that there, a peptide that loses affinity but through the mutation tends to be a poor candidate for an immunogenic epitope. The ones that gain affinity are very good ones, and that has been anticipated. But some people had thought that this area where you have no change in affinity would also be non-immunogenic, and we see no evidence of that. There's plenty of epitopes where the wild type and the mutated peptide bind just fine. We tried also then to ask, okay, in these affinity pattern one and two, do we see, specifically, we thought in the AP2 pattern where there's no difference in affinity, do we see that the mutation is severe? So that the mutation introduces a residue that is very different to the T cell? And we tried to quantify that using blossom scores, and we saw zero difference at all. This might, is still confusing to me, and I don't completely understand why this is happening, because intuitively you would think that should be true. But one of the problems is that we do not really have a very good score. Blossom scores are evolutionary distances. It is not at all clear that for a TCR, that is a meaningful statement. So probably there's a better way to quantify what mutations really are very different from a T cell recognition standpoint. What we do see is that in this AP2 group, there's an enhancement of peptides that amino acid residue, chineside chains, that we have seen are increasingly present in epitopes. So essentially, residues like tryptophans, tyrosines, that have long side chains and tend to be recognized well, are increased in epitopes over background peptides. So that could be a mechanism that doesn't look evolutionary distant, but looks like it has an increased impact on TCR recognition. So we did a bunch of these evaluations, and ultimately came up with a prediction scheme, where ultimately you come up with your set of peptides, you're asking, is it at least 5,000 nanomolar? If no, then you discard it. If yes, then we're doing our length rescaled rank prediction, asking, is it in this AP3 candidate where you have a worse binding of the mutant versus the wild type? If so, then you discard it. If no, then we take it, then we do our immunogenicity score, and all these tools are on the IEDB and available for free. And then if it's poor with that, then we discard it. Otherwise, we go on and have our list of peptide candidates, which we're now using a number of validation schemes to see does this work. So that's what we are aiming for, an actionable scheme, where you start with a number of mutations, and you end up with a number of neoadoptopes that we consider to be highly likely candidates for T cell recognition. So overall, I hope I've shown you that T cell epitope identification can benefit from bioinformatic predictions in multiple contexts, obviously here in cancer. MHC binding has been our focus, mainly because it's the most selective criteria. It is crucial, that is necessary, but not sufficient for T cell determination recognition. There is unique aspects to T cell epitopes in cancer, specifically the mutant versus non-mutant relationship, which just isn't present in infectious agents, and I think we've just made the first initial steps of trying to understand how that can be used to improve epitope prediction. And in general, for this and for all other things, it will be crucial to have large-scale datasets, high-quality datasets, to rationally design these prediction schemes and compare what's better or worse. And in our mind, obviously, we would love to have cancer data in the IEDB to do this in a community-driven and transparent fashion. So this is the team. This is Alex Sette, who's the PI and inventor of the MHC binding assay. The, okay, John isn't on here, but this is a large team effort, as I said, and our funding currently is from NIAID and internal funds at LJI and others. With that, I want to thank you.
So in the first few talks, we saw a lot of focus on like the T cell repertoire and sequencing TCR sequences. Are there plans to extend IEDB to also include TCR patterns or?
So actually, we are already doing it. We, it has been very interesting. For the longest time, people were doing the repertoire sequencing, but not the epitope specificity. The way we have the whole database designed in our funding mission, we will, we are including TCR sequences, but only if the epitope is known. Now, there's more and more of these papers coming out, and we're doing a targeted effort to put them in. Because there's so little data, it's kind of hidden in the search interface, and I'd be happy to show you. You can search for it right now, but we are redesigning the database. It's going to be more prominent on the front and searching for, say, a given CD3, has it been seen before? What was the epitope that recognized? Those queries will be possible in the near future, yes?
Thank you.
So, yes. Yes. I'll repeat the question. So the question was, what exact machine learning techniques are we using? So we've been using through the years all kinds of different methods. Definitely, the Copenhagen team has been focusing on feed-forward neural networks originally, so classical neural networks. I'm sure Ron Brunach did the code originally on the stuff that they were using. But now, they've also tried a bunch of deep learning stuff, et cetera. We've been trying support vector machines. We've been trying linear regression models, decision trees, I don't know. We've tried a bunch, yeah. The neural networks do work the best, so at this point. I think there's this one thing, I still love the matrix models for, I love the ability to look at a matrix and see a position two, proline is good, and understand it. And if it then gets me little worse performance, hmm. And also, it's very fast to scan large sequences through it. So if, I mean, if performance is solely based on prediction performance in terms of ability to reproduce experimental data, that's where your neural network is better than the others. But I mean, other things is like also when you want to scan, say, large pathogens, there is an advantage to do something fast and then do it in seconds. Yes, please.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I'm actually using your tools, and you answered quite a few of my questions that I anticipated I would be asking. I would like to ask you to comment on something from a bioinformatic perspective. When you are actually doing, trying to predict new epitopes, much papers actually use only SNPs because when you include indels, they have their own subset of problems. You need phasing, you need how they affect the downstream analysis. But even when you include that, frame-shifting indels do seem to create loads of combinations that are actually of low ultimate score. So any comment on that? Is it true that actually SNPs are the most immunogenic mutations, or is there some sort of artifact of current analysis?
Okay, so that's a really good question. So we are also doing some experimental T-cell epitope mapping in cancer. And for frame shifts, we've just been doing overlapping peptides because we are also, it's for the, I think one of the problems with this, everybody's doing SNPs, is because it's so much easier to deal with it. And there's clearly a bias there. And so we have absolutely seen immunogenic frame shift mutations. And I think there, I mean, clearly, you have a very, very, very different peptide than before, and it would make a lot of sense that it's recognized. Yeah, so that's it.
Thank you.
Very good talk. I know that your IEDB database already have kind of about 25,000 cancer epitope annotated entries.
Cancer epitopes or which epitope, sorry?
So when you, when I just had one time, I just had a quick look, and there is option that I can specify the disease type as cancer and the species as human, and then the output was about kind of 25,000 lows. So I'm kind of confusing now that is all the cancer epitope predictions or this is known in literature as cancer?
Okay, so this is again, the interesting of funding issues, right? So if it's a human papilloma virus, then it's an infection, then we can curate it. If then, there's cancer epitopes in that same paper, we keep it in. So a virally induced tumor, that we would curate. If it's not known if it's a virus, then we can't curate it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there. I'm sure I just missed this, but when you were doing your TCG analysis and you're looking at the mutations from, not predicted mutations, where do you put the mutation in your nine mer peptide when you do the prediction? In the middle, or do you do a window over the mutation?
So actually, we, for every given mutation, we essentially made all eight mers, nine mers, 10 mers, 11 mers, 12 mers, 13 mers, I think, that you could generate. And that would be then the entirety, and then we made a huge dataset of a million peptides or so, and then randomly picked from this dataset, I think for every mutation that we had a literature epitope for, then we picked the same length, the same number of mutations from there. Yes. And then if you look at the overall distribution of where the mutations in the peptide, it ends up looking the same in the control dataset and in the wild-type dataset.
Okay, thanks.
Hello. So when we were comparing the results from 50 donors from our experimental with the IEDB prediction back into 2014, we found there are two major difficulties for us. One is that a lot of donors' HOAs, we, there is no prediction in IEDB. So my first question is, do you plan to, given right now, there are a lot of patient sequencing results, and do you plan to increase those data in those alleles? Because we know that it's highly polymorphic.
So there is, there should be a prediction for every known HLA allele, and there's a checkbox that limits the choice of alleles to the most frequent only that are in more than 1% of the population or so. If you uncheck that checkbox, then you get all of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So and then the next question we had at the time was, because the, we have HOA ABC and the HOA DRDPDQ for the class two, so how do we know which gene was really expressed, even though they have the genes, but which allele really contribute to the presentation? So I don't know if you have any comments on that?
I mean, assuming you have typing data for your patients and you know what they express.
Yes, yes, we do.
So I mean, in our own, I mean, class one and class two, that's always the first question. Do you care about class two or not? We actually see quite a lot of class two responses, so I think you do have to take the IEDB.
No, actually, at that time, we focused on class two rather than class one.
And I mean, for reasons that are not completely clear to me, DR does seem to be the majority of the responses that we are seeing, but I mean, it's maybe 40% TP and DQ together versus 60% DR, and the DR predictions work better. So if you have your limited resources, just focusing on DR, I think, is a rational approach, even though you will miss things, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm out of time, right?